Awesome. Alright, so good afternoon, EOF Scholars. Happy Monday. Happy belated weekend and holidays. Today, we have the incredibly amazing Ms. Lisa Chekowitz from the Nursing and Division of Nursing and Health Sciences. We're going to go ahead and allow her today to provide us in this informative, informative town hall in regards to any changes and so forth. So I do ask that you hold your questions, allow her to provide any updates. And let's give her a warm welcome because this is important that you go ahead and begin to meet her. So, EOF, yes. Yes.
I'm a graduate of EOF II of Rutgers many years ago. So I know it's a special program and a special group, and absolutely, we can do it. So what we want to talk about today is the nursing major and what we were before is pre-nursing. So let's start with, when you come into Hudson and decide you wanted to be nursing, you all chose pre-nursing. And that probably showed up on your portal. But within the last few weeks and due to financial regulations and financial rules, we had to change your pre-nursing major to what's called Medical Science Pre-Professional. It doesn't mean that nursing's no longer a major or that you can't do nursing. What it is, is we had to pick a major that you all can go into that leads to a degree. Pre-nursing does not lead to a degree, but nursing does. But everyone who wants to be in nursing has to pick a major, and it's pre-nursing. If you work really hard and you be getting accepted into nursing, your major will be nursing. But for the moment, if you're not accepted, you have to pick a major. And because pre-nursing can no longer be an option due to financial aid regulations and rules, you're going to be Medical Science Pre-Professional. But the most important thing to include and remember is, one, you can still be the nursing major, and two, you can still and you should follow the nursing curriculum. So even though in the catalog, the nursing, the pre-professional major will be listed there, if you're really intending to do nursing, you should follow and continue to follow the pre-nursing prerequisites. Now, the Medical Science Pre-Professional will come in in this way. If you decide in the interim nursing's not for you, you can follow that curriculum. It's very closely aligned to pre-nursing with a few exceptions. If you try for nursing and you don't pass the exam right away and you need to continue with classes, or you need to have 12 credits, but you've done everything in the nursing curriculum, you could do some of these credits listed on pre-professional and still get a degree while you're waiting to be admitted to nursing. So that's how that all came to be, but most importantly, nursing still exists. You can still follow the curriculum. And in time, they're going to make what's called a pre-nursing track under the pre-professional, but we didn't get there yet, but we will. So if all of you on here had a pre-nursing major, it should now be changed to this pre-professional at this time. One thing I can say is about nursing is we only accept once a year. Currently, we are filled for 2021. If you apply soon, it will probably be waitlist or fall 2022. There are no more spots for the 2021 class at the moment. So that's the basic idea of the pre-professional degree. The BURSSAR and the registrar had to work collaboratively to get this all changed, but the majority of the change was related to financial aid rules and regulations. And it still allows students who want to be nurses to get financial aid loans and all of that by changing the major. That was the basic idea behind why we had to do this. But the majors still exist, and you're welcome to continue to apply, and we are accepting for the next year.
Great. Thank you so much, Lisa, for that. So just to clarify, because I know that it was a lot of information, which is great information. But just in case some of our scholars are kind of like, okay, what does this look like? I would love us to break that down. So at this point in time, as you mentioned, pre-nursing will no longer be available. It's going to be now going forward, medical pre, Medical Science Pre-Professional. And so this is because the college is seeing that scholars are staying there, correct? And they're not finishing, finishing up their prerequisites. So, or they'll finish it and they're not able to enter the nursing program because they're not passing either the nursing, the National League for Nursing exam, the ATIT's exam, or the SAT's exam. Okay. And so in this moment in time, what would you recommend in regards to those scholars? For example, who are still in the midst of obtaining, trying to do their best with, you know, passing the exam, and this is still their goal, you know? Is it to remain and change your major to Medical Science Pre-Professional and so forth? So that's, I know that's a question for many of my scholars because that's where they get stuck, is that exam.
As far as we were advised, all the majors would be changed automatically. So if you came with pre-nursing, it has or will be changed to the pre-professional Medical Science. So it will be changed automatically. But most importantly, keep in mind that if nursing's really your goal, follow the nursing curriculum and finish them according to the curriculum. I don't want students to then follow the pre-professional and not have the prereqs for nursing. So if you're right now sitting here and thinking, you know, I still want to do nursing and it's really for me, follow the curricula to nursing. And make sure to take that exam as soon as you feel you can. And if you look at the pre-professional Medical Science, it's aligned very, very closely to nursing with a few exceptions. I think in the pre-professional, they need biology and they need a higher level chemistry. And the electors are a little different, but everything else is the same. So we'll play out a scenario. If you really wanted nursing and you were following the curriculum, but unfortunately, you didn't make the grade, you could easily take three more classes and get this pre-professional degree while you're waiting. So that's the idea behind it, that students who either miss the deadline or can't get in right away can actually get a degree and be working towards something.
Thank you for that, Lisa, because I think that's important for scholars to keep in mind. So right now, any scholars, would you like to ask any questions at this time before we continue on? Just to clarify what Ms. Lisa Chekowitz just mentioned, in case there's any confusion and so forth? Because this is a time, you know, EOF, because it may look different. We may have different information sessions that will be happening virtually or on ground. So it's important that in case you don't get the information then, that you get it here right now. This is the point of it, and this is why I'm advocating as your EOF counselor to have this information brought up front to you, you know, delivered from Ms. Lisa Chekowitz in the department. So any questions so far? You can unmute yourself. Don't be afraid.
Hi, Miss T. Hi, Ms. Lisa. Hi, I have a question. So after you like graduation from medical science professor, so what job you would work for this?
That's a good question. If people are interested in working in the medical field at all, working towards becoming a nurse, this could be a potential major for you. But if your desire is still to be a nurse, then you can either transfer to one of the four-year schools or wait the year and try for nursing again.
And so I think that Miana is also asking, what specific career would somebody be able to work with, like an associate in Medical Pre-Professional?
What it was originally assigned is you're interested in going to medical school. If you're interested in working in hospitals, but not really as a nurse. If you're interested in being around like people who work with science or general science areas, it's not too specific.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome. And then we have a question or comment here in the chat, Lisa. Rashid mentions, I failed the pre-entrance exam twice, the NLN. The English sections were too hard for me. Does that mean that the pre-entrance exam will have some changes?
Pre-entrance exam won't have any changes, but when you take the NLN, you have to wait three months in between each testing. But you can also take the ATITs or the SAT. So if you don't do too good in NLN, maybe try the ATITs. And when, when you're practicing to take these exams, make sure that you time yourself because each section's timed. So when you're practicing, also time yourself for each. I think each section is 60 minutes.
Thank you so much. Lisa, I wanted to ask, let's say, for example, they have now finished their prerequisites, right? And so because they're still waiting to enter the nursing exam, I mean, the nursing program by taking the exam. And let's say, for example, now that this change has happened, should they continue on with the Medical Science Pre-Professional Program, the degree program? Even though, let's say, because we'll see this, for example, I'll have a scholar, let's say, that finishes up all their prerequisites. And now they're not here for the fall semester because their focus is to get in for next fall, but they're working on the exam. What I usually like for my scholars to do is to work towards the exam while they're in, getting into the ending of their prerequisites, at least around that time. But apply early on and then study for the exam as they continue because they'll be in chemistry, they'll be in AMP1, AMP2, microbiome, et cetera. And so should a scholar continue on with Medical Science Pre-Professional? Or should they just stay there with the prerequisites and attempt to get in with studying for the exam? Because that's, that's where it gets a little tricky, because I know that they stay and they stop there.
What the intent is that if students really want a degree and they're not sure when and if they will get into nursing, then they should follow the pre-professional. But there could be students in our group who maybe have a degree somewhere else or already have an associate from somewhere else. So then this really wouldn't be for them because they already have that type of degree. But if you're waiting and you need to have more credits for financial aid or you want to obtain this degree in addition to nursing, you could follow it. But it is not 100% that you must, right? So if you're looking at Medical Science Pre-Professional and that isn't for you, even though you're waiting for nursing, but maybe psychology is, you're welcome to join that major. This is kind of like a holding place for students trying to get into nursing. You don't have to do this major. Maybe you look it over and think psychology's for you, then you could do that. But when nursing comes in and you get accepted, you'd have to change it to nursing. That's the important idea. If you do become accepted, your major's going to be nursing. You don't have to worry about the pre-professional.
So much, Lisa. I have some scholars coming in, and then I also have some staff. So scholars who just walked in, I'm happy that you saw my email. Because this is why it's so important that if Ms. Guada sends an email or Ms. Tejo sends an email, or she comes and finds you via text message, either way, any staff member, when there's an email that is sent out or message, it is the same importance, even if I send it out, okay, scholars? Just keep that in mind because there's a part of time that you've already missed of the beginning of this important town hall. And so, you know, we are recording this right now. That way you can watch the rest of it later. But what we're discussing right now is this major change and effect that will be affecting you all as pre-nursing scholars, as this major will no longer be pre-nursing. It will now be going forward, the new major will be called Medical Science Pre-Professional. And so Ms. Lisa Chekowitz, who is here kindly here today, providing us information about this major change and how this will affect your financial aid, how this will affect your major overall and your attendance and entrance into the program. So it's very important that if you have any questions today, so please do so. As your EOF counselor, I always encourage you all to use your voice, to ask questions, because this is the time. And it's important for you to just ask anything that you want. No question is a, I don't like to use those words, but no question is a dumb question, no question is a wrong question. Every question is an excellent question, no matter, that's important that you are aware about what is occurring. So does anyone have any questions so far or comments or anything or support that they're looking for before I go to the chat?
I just want to say something. So this program is for two years, right? So it would be the fall 2021 and then for next year also, right?
Right, but the nursing alone takes two years. So sometimes students at HCC take three, more than two years. Because once you get into nursing, it's two years to complete the nursing. So some students take one year prereqs and then two years nursing. So since students, if you haven't been accepted, can't start nursing this year, it would probably take you three years.
Okay, because for like, I wanted, like, my plan was to transfer after I get my scholarship to a four-year university. So I don't know if I'm like, I'm in the right path. That's what I just want to make sure, if this will be like beneficial for, you know, when I transfer.
Okay, well, the first question is, is it nursing your intended major?
Yes.
Okay, so it is the right path because you would get a RN license through Hudson Nursing Program, right? So if nursing's your intended major, you're in the right place, yay. Because you will get the two years of nursing and it will enable you to sit for state exam. But as we know, we always want our HCC students to keep going and moving forward. So if you do get our degree here at HCC, we have several cooperative programs that could get you the BSM. We have one with NJCU, we have one with St. Peters, we have one with, oh, what's the online one, Phoenix? We have a few others. So if our students get the two-year degree here, they can go right to one of those schools to get BSM. Sometimes it can take you three and a half years instead of four.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So much. Great question, Angie. As someone who's already coming in and starting this fall, right? Fall 2021, yes, congratulations.
I see some names that I recognize, but I won't call them out, but congratulations.
We can, you know, I'm pretty sure they won't mind because it's important to recognize that, you know, their cohort, some of their cohort members and peers and family have been able to get accepted and that they can do the same thing, you know? So it's just important to recognize that because I know that they're, you know, the same as T. I'm stressed and I'm like, I know. So, you know, finding other ways. So this is a time, EOF, this is a time to ask Ms. Lisa Chekowitz if there's anything that you're concerned about or, you know, tutoring, et cetera, however that looks like, please ask the questions now. This is a moment in time.
I came in a bit late. Hello, my name is Rowan. I came in a bit late. I kind of missed what Ms. Tajal was talking about with the nursing program changing, I think, to being a medical professional program. Can you please go over that one more time?
Yes. So due to financial aid rules and regulations, financial aid will not now cover any major that doesn't lead to a degree. So if you're pre-nursing, there is unfortunately no guarantee that you would get into HCC nursing and get that degree. So financially, we no longer support those type of programs. So in order to do that, we at HCC transferred all the students who are pre-nursing to a major that closely aligned to what nursing curricula was. And that was Medical Science Pre-Professional. However, let's stress that if you did still want nursing, you should follow the nursing curriculum and follow those curriculum courses. But for the financial aid reasons and for reasonings of needing to have a degree to get financial aid and other loans available, we had to slide all the pre-nursing student into a major. And that's the one that HCC decided was closely aligned to nursing. But if you do get accepted into nursing, your major will be nursing, not the pre-professional. If you, upon acceptance.
Okay, thank you so much. I understand that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I have one question.
Yes, go ahead, Simone. This is, yes, ask your question, Simone.
Thank you, Miss T. All right, so I have all the prerequisites for applying that for nursing program except the CSC. So can I take it after I get accepted in the program or what will happen?
Okay, that's intro to computers. So intro computer, CSC, you said, right?
Well, she means CSS. She meant College of the
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's been waiting to take that class. It's her last class before she came into the program. So I've been, yeah, but go ahead.
Okay, that makes a difference. CSS 100 is absolutely required before you can start a nursing course. So CSS 100, math 100 or math 114 and intro to psychology are the three that are required before you could start nursing. So those are the three absolutely needed. You can't enter nursing without them. All the others are highly recommended because it can only help you on that admissions exam. English, Anatomy I, Anatomy II, Chemistry, they could all help you on that admissions exam to do better.
Yeah, I already finished all of them except that one credit class. So there's no way to take it during nursing program?
No. It's a prerequisite.
All right, thank you.
And Simone, in that case, because there's, your, your case is very different than the general scholars of your cohort here. As I mentioned, send an email to Ms. Lisa Chekowitz and copy me on there like we spoke about and ask that question specifically as you're wrapping up, okay? So that way we can figure that part out together.
Okay, a little different scenario.
Very different. Thank you, Lisa. Yes.
What was I wanting to mention? I was thinking, oh. So as far as the admission exam goes, you all have three choices. But I was speaking with a few students the other day and they said, it is possible to review and it is possible to study for it and give themselves some prep time for that. So, you know, if, if you're waiting to get in, you want to do some study for that. And if you don't do well on one, try the other ones. A lot of students like the Ts these days, the ATITs exam, and it's offered right here on Newark Avenue. And it's on campus and remote, I believe. The NLN's just remote, I believe, at this time.
Excellent. Thank you for that, Lisa, because there's a lot of scholars that are still figuring out what exam to take, which one to take. And I agree, there are a lot of scholars that are going towards the ATITs at this time. And I do concur in regards to that. We do have a question here on the chat that I was inquiring about, is chemistry still mandatory before applying to the nursing program?
Good question. Here's the thing about chemistry. It would help you on the exam, but it can be high school or college level, but it has to be less than five years and grade of C or above. So if you had it in high school, less than five years, we'll take that. If not, we recommend CHP 100 at HCC within the last five years. Now, it is required before you can begin nursing. We like it before you become accepted, but sometimes student is in it at the time they're applying and being reviewed, and that's okay too. But you must submit proof before you can begin nursing.
Thank you, Lisa. You have another question as well in regards to the SAT exam? Do you want to unmute yourself, Teresa, so you can ask? Wait, you're muting.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question while she's kind of figuring?
You go ahead, Fatima. And then Teresa asked to unmute you, so go ahead and answer.
Okay, so you know how when you see that, like before it changed, our majors changed to pre-professional medical, you know, when it's a pre-nursing, you could see your progress. You could see how many classes you need to take. And so like now, I see there's like a lot of extra classes on there. And I don't know if we need to do all of those before applying to the program.
That is a good question. It comes up on every session that we've had. You don't. So if you want to absolutely know you want to do nursing, I'd stick with doing those credits first. And then if you get kind of stuck waiting, then you may want to try to do the pre-professional extra credits to ensure you get that degree. But I'd follow the nursing first. And you don't need to take those extra. If this is not for you and pre-professional isn't for you, then you don't have to do that as your degree. You can pick another major or you could just not do that major and wait for nursing. But it's one avenue, but it doesn't have to be everybody's avenue.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm sorry. I have a question. Once you take the SAT test and let's say you pass it, do you have to take another test in order to get into the nursing program or?
No, you can either take SAT, ATITs, or NLN. So either of them, all of, one of three of them will do. The SAT is 480 verbal, 480 math, the math, the minimum. So if you take that and your scores are high enough, you won't need to take another exam.
And what's the difference between the SATs and a TEAS?
They're all the same. It all tests your knowledge of the basic same ideas. It's just a different type of testing, but it's all the same. It basically tests your verbal, math, and English and science knowledge. The SAT doesn't have a science section, so if you're not good in science, take the SAT. Some people, a lot of nursing, people who want to be nurses are very good in science. So they all want to take the Ts or the NLN because it has a science part. If you're not good in science, take the SAT. There's no science part.
Okay. And then when you, I'm sorry, and then when you signed up for it, it's at the, because I was looking at your interview before. It's at thecollegeboard.com to take the test?
Yes. College Board does the SAT, yep. And they're offering it, but it's not too many offerings at this time because of the COVID situation. ATITs is the most offered at this time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're getting all the information. So those scholars who didn't come, let them know. They're missing out, even if we're recording, they're missing out because this is the correct information that you're getting directly from Ms. Lisa. This is coming directly from the Division of Nursing and Health Sciences. Remember, it's not about, you know, what my friend said this and my friend said that. No, it's about what the department is informing us and your EOF counselor who is right here, okay? So things to keep in mind. Also, we do have another question. We have a couple more questions, Lisa, in the chat. Chrissy, I saw your, yeah, your message and your question. So yes, I'll answer that as your advisor and counselor. You do have to take, so scholars, as you know, and if you don't know how it works with anatomy and physiology, you must always take anatomy and physiology I, then II, then microbiology. That is the back, that's how it works and that's how it's planned because microbiome is the all, overall course after AMP1 and AMP2. And those are prerequisites that you do must, you must complete before you come into the nursing program. So that's something to keep in mind. Microbiome is usually that class that you can take with nursing one, as Lisa has mentioned before. But it's just something to keep in mind. The goal is for you to complete the majority of prerequisites before you enter the nursing program. So that way you're not carrying that heavy load with you with the nursing one course because it will be about, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Lisa, it's about eight or nine credits. So it's going to be a heavy course and you will be, you know, clinicals, classes, Monday through Thursday or Monday through Friday, et cetera, depending on clinicals and depending on your program, if it's a weekend, evening, or day division. So something to keep very, you know, keep in mind.
Correct. The nursing one 10 six credits and then the second's eight and then nine and nine. But a lot of people like six credits isn't a lot, but you're correct. When you talk about nursing, it's not just lecture, it's going to clinical and it's preparing a patient, it's investigating every medication, every patient you'll have is on. It's about investigating every illness. And unfortunately, guys, every patient has multiple illnesses, multiple diagnosis. It's just life in the city, right? every patient has multiple illnesses, multiple diagnosis. It's just life in the city, right? So you have so much to investigate. So six credits doesn't seem like a lot because we're used to twelve and eighteen, right? But that's why if you can get a lot of the non-nursing out of the way, six credits will be manageable. And if you have to work or take care of family or other commitments, it's, it's a lot. But manageable and doable because we have a lot of people graduating, so we can do it.
Agreed. Thank you so much, Lisa, for that. And things to keep in mind, right? Is that the importance of having a certain GPA? Because just when you get into the nursing program, there's a certain percentage that you have to keep above to remain in the program. So things to keep in mind. Um, the next question that I do have here in the chat is from Rosanna. Simone, I'm coming to your question next. Rosanna is asking, when can we start to put in our nursing application to be accepted into the next class? And when does the next class begin? Or the next cohort begin is what she's asking.
Nursing admits every fall. The next one's fall twenty twenty-two. You can begin to apply anytime you'd like. Um, make the application, but the next step would be deciding when you want to test. Because that's when we'll begin to um review your file and look into your GPA and all of that. So the application you can make anytime. It's on the website and there's no fee. But then decide when you want to test and how you're going to organize those courses.
Um, I had a question about the math course, so.
Go ahead, Rowan. And then I think, Rosanna, you wanted to ask something. I say your hand up, right? Okay, cool.
Okay, I apologize. Um.
Go ahead.
So for the math, for the math course, I got, um, I, I selected myself um to be, it's like, it's like a self, self-selection course. When I first started at Hudson, they told me I don't really have to take um the, the basic math since I already like um self-selected not to take it. But right now I need um to take math one hundred or math one one four for me to be um ready to take my required courses for the nursing um, um, course, of course. So what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to register on Liberty Link to take the class uh in summer one. But it's not letting me because it says that I have to have like um somebody to, to waive it for me, I think. Hello?
Rowan's new into our EOF program as well, so.
Okay, so I'll be talking to you about that later.
Yes.
So definitely.
Well, I'm gonna have everyone, so EOF scholars, I don't want you leaving as soon as Mrs. Lisa Chekowitz finishes her presentation of this information session in town hall. Everyone stays, nobody leaves, okay?
Okay, got it.
And just have a follow-up and update, okay?
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome, Rowan. Always a great question. Thank you.
You're right. It's math one hundred or math one fourteen for nursing. Yep, you're right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rosanna, go ahead.
So I guess just to follow up the question that I had previously asked, because currently I have completed, well, I am on the steps of completing all of my prerequisites with the exception of microbiology, which I'm planning on taking summer one. Um, would it be in my best interest to wait to test after my summer one course? As I would have completed at that point all of my prerequisites? Or should I start applying now for the test so that I can go ahead and get that done?
At this point, because the class is already filled, I'd say you can wait till you're done with your prerequisites. If we were still open and you might have a shot at entering, I'd say you want to do it quickly. But um, we already have an established waitlist, so I think you can probably wait, but not too long. As soon as you finish um micro, then you can sit to take it. So it's fresh and you remember all that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, so I was, um, after Teresa, I think the title of her name was asking about the SAT. I went on the website because I think that that'd be a better test option for me specifically. And I remember in high school they had an option to take, well, we were forced to do the essay. But I know here, I'm not sure if we need the essay part or if we don't need the essay part.
For nursing, we do not look at the essay part on SAT. But you'll write an essay on your application and we do read that for nursing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then Simone, I know you had a question. Um, and Simone, that question was partially answered just now. The fall um twenty twenty-one is now closed in regards to any applications and acceptance. So it would be for next year for fall twenty twenty-two. So you can decide when you want to take that nursing course. I'm sorry, you can decide when you want to take the CSS class, but that will be a separate conversation with us and Ms. Lisa Chekowitz outside of our meeting right now, our mandatory meeting. Uh, so if you decide to take the NLN now, that's up to you, that's fine. Uh, the point is just you taking the exam to see if you pass. So that way you have that, that ticket, that golden ticket to enter into the nursing program for next year.
Alright, so I already applied for the exam and uh for next week. So there is no chance to get in the twenty twenty-one in the full nursing program?
No, Ms. Lisa Chekowitz just mentioned that the classes, the seats are full already and the waitlist as well.
Even if I already applied for the nursing program?
Um, yes, unfortunately, um, it's based on when students apply and then test. So when you do test, the committee's going to look at your application. Um, if there's any spots available, they'll let you know, but I don't want to mislead you in any way. At this minute, the class is filled and the waitlist has already been established. There's always potential people don't come or they don't get their prereqs. That's the way, you know, it falls. So if there was any availability, we'd let you know, but I don't want to make that statement because at this time it's not, um, everything's filled at the minute.
Alright, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that question, Simone. Thank you, Lisa. Uh, we have another question in the chat. Uh, Rowan is asking, can I take a nursing? Rowan, I believe you're, you're referring to like you being in the nursing program already. That's what I'm assuming. But um, she's inquiring if she was taking, if she can take a nursing course during a summer semester.
Once you become accepted, each nursing course is laid out one per semester and they are consecutive. So nursing one ten, one twenty, two ten, two twenty. There's only one nursing course in the fall, in the summer, and it's the end of your curricula. So, and it's two weeks into summer one, but that's at the end of your curriculum. So each one is one per semester and they um are consecutive. You have to pass one before you can go to the next.
Okay, got it. So also for the nursing, also for the nursing course, um, am I uh allowed to take a nursing course in the winter as well or that's not allowed?
No, it starts in fall, fall, spring, nothing in the first summer, then fall, spring. And then the last of your nursing course would be summer one when you're ready to graduate. And it's only two weeks into summer one. No winter intercession for nursing. And no summer, with the exception of the last course.
Okay, I got it. Alright, that's perfect.
Awesome questions. EOF, any other questions that you may hold right now that you would like to ask? Go ahead, Teresa.
I have a question. Um, because I'm getting confused with the testing. Everybody's saying you have to take the test. Do you have to apply first for the nursing program and then take the test? Or do you take the test first then apply for the nursing program?
You want to apply because once the scores are submitted, submitted to us from College Board or T's or A, um, NLN, we'll have nowhere to put it and know where to know who you are and what's your curriculum and your GPA. So apply first, so we have your application. And then when the scores come in, we'll put them um in your file and begin to review it.
And as I recall, um, like I said, I was, I was looking at the interview before, before this. You could take the test three times and you take the highest or how does that work?
No, for NLN, you can test. If you don't pass, you have to wait three months. That's for the NLN. For the SAT and the ATIT's, you can test and retest as much as you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, if possible, I have another question. Um, I see that you mentioned that there is a waitlist. Um, as of right now, which I totally understand, but how does that go for the next cohort? Do they, obviously they get taken first and then if you don't have any seats left, anybody that applied would then be put onto the next waitlist?
If you're on the waitlist for fall twenty twenty-one and you don't get in, you'll go to fall twenty twenty-two automatically. Anyone who's applying now and may get accepted in May, June will be twenty twenty-two automatically. And we do have day, evening, and weekend curriculum program. So day, evening, weekend. And if you become accepted, you'll choose from one of those divisions.
Alright.
I have a question. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Later on, I know what part of the, in order to get accepted, they ask for recommendation letters. If you get a recommendation letter ahead of time, is that good for next year? Because I was already asking ahead of time for people to write the recommendation letter for me.
A very good question. We will keep your whole file and the references and everything for one year. So if you apply now, we'll keep it for next year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, one more question.
Yes, Simone.
Alright, so as that twenty twenty-one classes are almost full, so if I take the NLN exam to, like, next week and I already passed, so I have to take it one more time if I'm getting, applying for twenty twenty-two?
If you take the exam, let's say, for example, next week and it's, it's a good score, the committee will review it and accept you and it would be for acceptance fall twenty twenty-two. And then you wouldn't need to take exam again. Everything will just stand for the next year.
Alright, awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did see two questions here in the chat, Lisa. One is asking, uh, can I take microbiology during the semester? So I won't have to take it during my, during my nursing courses while I'm in the nursing program.
I meant, I'm sorry, I meant during summer, not semester.
Okay. Oh, yes, you could take microbiome. Uh-huh. You could take microbiome Angie in the summer. And that's something that you and I could talk about for registration. So you could do that before.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And it all depends like on funding, you know, because financial aid only will cover. And financially, only will kick in for those six credits if you take six credits over the summer. But because it will be a four-credit course, um, we will be discussing, we'll be sending an email about summer funding through EOF, but that's not guaranteed. As you all know, we have applications that we send out every semester, either for winter or summer. And then, and or you can, I'll have you follow up with your financial aid counselor to inquire and copy me on the email and inquire if you, if CCOG can cover that class for the summer one or summer two, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Great question. Uh, I have another question here, uh, Lisa. Can I take the NLN and the SATs? So I'm, I'm assuming uh the scholars asking if they could take it both at the same time, or you know, one and then another.
Yeah, you can take all three if you want. The NLN, just if you don't pass, you have to wait three months. But some people take the NLN and then they realize they didn't do good and they take the SAT. So yeah, you can do that.
Awesome. Great question. Thank you so much, Lisa.
You're welcome.
I do see, okay, she said, okay, thank you. Okay, great. Uh, any other questions, EOF, that I missed on the chat? But I, I think I have touched upon the majority of them.
I have one last question.
Go ahead, Teresa. Yes.
I'm sorry. When you go to sign up to take the SAT test, because I was, I was looking into that as well. Um, I re, I seen on one of your interviews, you put that, you put a nursing code that we have to put in. When you go to take the test, do we need any code or we just take the test like that?
Very good. The SAT, I believe the code is four one three six. Is that familiar? Two one three nine. Oh, I'm gonna have to email you on that one. Uh, Ms. Sampson knows the code. When you go take the SAT, it's gonna say HCC nursing program and that's what you choose. But there is a specific code, so email me to my email and I'll email it back to you. There is a code you take, so we'll get it directly.
Awesome. I'll be dropping Ms. Lisa Chekowitz's contact information at the end.
Yeah. So email me that question. I'll try, I have it in my books here somewhere, what the code is, so we get it directly.
Yeah, because I tried to ask them, I called them directly and they didn't know what I was talking about when I asked them specifically.
There's a certain code. I think it's two one three nine, but let me check on that one.
I have a question. My last question. So you know how.
You want, ask all the questions you want, please.
So you know how we have different options, you know, like do you take the SAT or the T's or the NLN exam? Does any particular exam, like, I don't want to like have a, like, say if I, if someone takes the SAT and then someone else takes the NLN, will they have a better chance because they took that exam?
No, any of them will be fine, but there's a minimum for each. So in order to continue in the process, you have to meet the minimum of each of them and they're a different score for each.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So we have to take like test for professional science or no? Mid-sized professor?
Oh, so you're asking if you need to take like an entrance exam for the medical science pre-professional?
Yes.
No, only um entrance exam is for nursing. If you just want to do the medical science pre-professional degree, you can just follow the curriculum. No um admission requirements for that. If you want to do the nursing, then it is one of the admission tests.
If I, if I want to do like my, um, my little system, so it would be better than size, I mean, it would be better to size professor or no?
What is it, medical assisting?
Yes.
I'm not sure about that curricula. It's short, isn't it? Is that a certificate, I think?
It, it's a, um, an AS program, but yeah, it's um an AS program. So an applied art science. Mm-hmm. And so the thing is that uh, the medical assisting program, the Miana, is another coordinator for, in the college, so we can look into that together. Okay?
Yeah.
Welcome. Awesome. Any other questions, EOF? I see Fabian is here, Martina, Nat- oh, Natasha, you did ask something in the chat, correct? If I'm not mistaken, you can unmute yourself if you can. No, I don't think she can right now. I'll, give me one second. Let me just go up. I believe Lisa, Natasha was just asking about um if the nursing program can work with her, uh, with a scholar's schedule, uh, if they have changing shifts at work.
Um, unfortunately, no. We only have three programs. So if you choose day, it begins about seven thirty or eight AM and goes till three PM. If you choose evening, it begins at five thirty PM and it ends eleven thirty or midnight. And if you choose weekend, you would go Friday evening beginning at five, five thirty, and all day Saturday, all day Sunday. But no, unfortunately, um, you, hmm, students can't be late for clinicals because patients are waiting and medications are doing all of that. So those timings are set in such a way that um your experience is based on those timings.
I have another question. I'm sorry. When you do the clinicals, it's only going to be in the hospital or it's other? Places as well?
Clinicals are in a lot of places and during this um COVID time, we still did clinicals. We were lucky and blessed to have some experiences still. Um, we go to hospitals, we go to home health agencies, we go inside people's homes, we go to nursing homes, psychiatric units, all of those type of things. And it's a lot of hospitals and agencies in the local area. But for each type of nursing, you'll have a different, different experience. So when you're doing like medical surgical nursing, you'll be in the hospital. When you're doing psychiatric nursing, you'll be in a different type of facility. If you're doing geriatrics, then we'll be in nursing home. Hmm, I'm trying to think. Oh, if you're doing critical care, you'll be in ICU or CCU. So the experience will be based on what you're studying in each course. And the placement is based on what type of nursing you're doing in that semester. Like if you're doing OB, then it would probably be at Christ Hospital, because the other plate, like they own, don't have that or Hoboken. So, yeah.
Um, I have one more question if possible. Um, for example, for myself, I am pretty much almost done with my prereqs. I just need microbiome, which I'm planning on taking hopefully, you know, summer one. So I would literally have maybe like a one-year gap um, before possibly starting, if accepted, the nursing program. Um, so you recommend just to kind of, for a student like me who's gonna have that one-year gap, to kind of keep myself on my toes to continue with the, um, medical science pre-professional, um, degree, or?
Right, if, if you have no, um, credits left, but you still want to keep your, um, status at HCC, then you can continue with the medical science pre-professional or another degree. But this one aligns pretty well, that you only need like three or four more classes to get the degree.
Oh, okay, perfect, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I have a question about how you were talking about clinicals, so that would start your first semester as a nursing student? Or would you have to wait until like your second year nursing student?
Um, in, in the HCC program, you have clinical in every course, and it starts in the first course and it goes through every course. So you'll have patient contact in every course.
We did have another question in the chat, Lisa. Uh, it's from one of our interns. Um, Ms. Alicia's just inquiring, what is the minimum SAT score? And are there any minimum scores for any of the exams?
Yep, yes, so SAT is minimal four eighty verbal and four eighty math. The ATITs is fifty-five percent on every section, so reading, math, and science for TES, it's fifty-five at least. And for NLN, listed under the percentile rank would be forty-five, um, verbal, math, science.
Excellent, and I saw Teresa wrote that there too. Great job, awesome, that's what we're talking about, great.
That's the minimum, but it has to be in every section. Yeah.
Agreed, thank you so much. All right, are there any other questions, EOF? Um, you know, staff that, that are here as well, Ms. Maria, Mr. Knight, Ms. Alicia, uh, anyone else have any other questions? Before we go ahead and wrap up, but I am gonna ask my cohort and scholars to remain after this meeting, um, after Ms. Lisa Chekowicz walks away, because I do want to speak with you all. So any other questions, EOF, this is the time, please.
Um, I have a question. So I just, um, handed in my form. So, um, I saw the, the, the scheduled time that I was to be there for the fall semester. And, um, I saw that the form said that the deadline was April first, I handed it in yesterday, is that okay? Or do I have to take, um, any more actions?
Did you email it to me? I didn't quite get to all my emails from the weekend, did you email it to me?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Um, I'm sh, I, I will email you as soon as we get off here and give a double check, I think I got yours, though. If you got it, that's fine.
Okay, thank you so much, thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome, okay. Well, EOF scholars, those who are still in the interim and have not applied yet to the nursing program, please do so. Um, those scholars, because I know that we, I'm currently experiencing, uh, and so is, uh, Ms. Maria and some of us, that these, uh, the major is showing up like undeclared. Please let me know if your major's showing up as undeclared right now. Uh, as your EOF counselor, I will go in and decide if I will approve your major change request. So some of the scholars, uh, Lisa, we're having is, we're facing is that they were supposed to switch over to medical science pre-professional, but not all of my scholars have been moved over of my cohort, so Ms. Maria has been assisting with that too. Um, so agreed, I, I see that, Fatima. So what's occurring is that I'm having them send in to me a change of, uh, approval of major, so that way I can go in, check it out, and then I will approve.
Okay, yeah, there's some, um, delays in the changing over, so it, but it's getting there, it's coming.
Agreed, okay, great. So what I'm doing in the interim, because I don't want a lot of my scholars to miss their seats for certain classes, because you know of the, you know, uh, let's say microbiome, AMP, those classes run out quick, the seats. So I'm having them send in a change of major request, because they're, they're blank right now, they can't see progress or nothing, and nor can I. So that's what's happening. So EOF, if you see that's happening for the pre-nursing scholars that are no longer pre-nursing, it is now medical science pre-professional. So if your, your major is not showing up at all, please send me an email. Uh, I do see Chrissy and Fatima. Uh, Fatima, I'm gonna speak with you as well, Chrissy as well, I'm approving some as I go. Uh, because I, you know, last week I took the first vaccine and I was out. So I'm back. So now, uh, with that being said, I'm going ahead and approving those who have made those change of requests, major requests. So please make sure you do so, if you're seeing that, because we gotta get registered now, this week ASAP, all right? Awesome, all right, Ms. Lisa. We want to go ahead and give you a round of applause, as a fellow alumni yourself. Thank you so much, EOF, let's give a great, grand applause to Ms. Lisa. Yeah, yes, 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 put those hands, let me see those hands, yes. Thank you so much, excellent, excellent, thank you so much. We're so grateful again, Lisa, for you coming in, and thank you for your time, we really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you so much, and everyone here, if nursing's for you, keep at it. Follow on to the curriculum, seek out our help if you have any other questions. And even if it's fall twenty twenty-two, if it's your goal and your passion, keep on it and you'll be okay, keep at it. And we look forward to seeing all of you, I'm glad I got to see some of your faces today. But, um, keep at it, reach out, um, provide, um, my name and email, and we'll reach out again if you have any other questions. Um, as we move forward, we can have another Q and A at a different time.
Yes, we shall. For this upcoming fall semester, I definitely want to bring you in and with the rest of the health department, so that way we can go ahead and just.